I call the Planning Commission meeting for October 20, 2021, to order. We'll all begin with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Joe, will you call the roll?
Mr. Haddon.
Here.
Mr. Perkovic.
Excused.
Mr. Tiedemann.
Here.
Mr. Varga.
Here.
Mr. Cicero.
Here.
Mr. Crocker.
Here.
Mr. Cook.
Here.
I'll entertain a motion for the approval of the minutes from the regular meeting, September 30, 2021.
So moved. Second.
That was me.
Joe, please call the roll.
And the second was Mr. Varga?
Mr. Varga.
Thank you, sorry. Mr. Haddon.
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Cicero.
Yes.
Mr. Crocker.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Before we get started, I'd like to take this opportunity to honor and remember our friend and Planning Commission member, Mr. William Snow. Mr. Snow passed away on October 5. He will be greatly missed throughout the community. Bill was committed to the city of Mentor. He served on the Planning Commission for 28 years and as a chairman for nine. Bill's knowledge, humor, and friendship will greatly -- will be greatly missed by the Planning Commission. We extend our sympathies to his family. Please rise for a moment of silence. Thank you. On tonight's agenda, we have one public hearing, and we will follow this format. First, the applicant will have the opportunity to explain what they would like to do at a particular location. Second, anyone wishing to speak in favor of the proposal will be given the opportunity to do so. Finally, anyone wishing to speak in opposition will be afforded that time as well. Or some people may just have questions, and we will try to get those answers. And with that, we have a conditional use permit to allow a personal training gym as a home occupation at 7220 Taft Street. Is that applicant here? Please come up and state your name and address for the clerk, and tell us a little bit about what you'd like to do.
Hello? Can you hear me? Okay?
Yeah.
Okay. My name's Erica Collins. I live at 7220 Taft Street in Mentor. And I'm here today to ask for the conditional use permit to start a personal training business in my garage. And do you want to know, like, a little bit about my plans?
Sure, show us a little bit about.
Okay, yes. So it's, I'm planning to do one-on-one personal training. Sometimes, you know, there could be two people coming with me, so that would be maximum. But just really trying to focus on overall wellness, nutrition a little bit as well. But really want to, the reason I want to do it in my home is because I want people to feel that, that personal, private connection without feeling pressured in a gym. So I just really want to be able to connect to people and help them reach their goals, because that's, my goal in life is to help everyone become healthy, and exercise is a big part of that.
Thank you. Is there anybody here wishes to speak in favor of this proposal? Is there anybody here wishing to speak in opposition to this proposal? Okay, this public hearing is closed, and it is 7:04 PM. Is there anything from the administration?
Mr. Chairman, nothing other than the eight conditions noted.
Thank you. Anything from the commission members?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Varga.
I think you read the report and the conditions that the city had. You've mentioned that you'd probably have no more than two people.
Correct.
Because of the parking situation, that would probably be the most, you would, two additional cars to your own car. Can we make that a condition, that there's no more than two people? I don't believe that's one of the conditions right now.
It's not, not currently.
Okay, so could we, would you accept that as being one of the conditions, that you could only have two parties?
Yes. That would, I prefer to do one person, though. Two is like a...
Okay, I understand, I understand.
Yes, yes.
And this is more of a question than a condition, I think. So the city's asked that you keep the garage door down, so that this is truly a private activity and not have to be shared by your neighbors. Is, you think you can maintain that through the process? I mean, in the middle of July, are you going to keep the door shut?
Yes. Yes, I will try.
I mean, well...
I will, yes.
Well, no, I'm, I'm just trying to be practical about it, you know, that, that if you're able to do that, then that's fine, so. So I would just add the ninth condition, that there be no more than two clients at any given time.
Yes.
Thank you. Is there anything else?
I have a quick question. Mr. Tiedemann? I stopped out and took a look, and your garage is, like, 15 feet away from your neighbor's house, so I'm, I'm just concerned with noise. You know, we've all been in gyms, we hear the clanking of the, the equipment. Usually there's loud music, usually there's some motivational yelling sort of thing, or cheering when you hit a goal.
Yes.
So, you know, I don't want your neighbors being outside enjoying their yard, and they get to hear that. So are we gonna, what are we gonna do to temper that, I guess?
Yes, so the, the floor that we put in is actually like a, like a rubber, it's like a foam floor. So that will prevent any, like, clanking on the ground, so it really, I, I exercise in there myself, so, and I've, I've dropped things, and it's, it's not more, like, it's like a stomping kind of sound, so that would eliminate that. And as far as music, when I am in there myself, I, I tend to have it a little bit louder, but I actually asked my neighbor, he was outside the other day, and I asked him if he ever heard us, and he said, "Heard you, heard you where?" So I think, you know, just by talking to him, he doesn't even hear me in there. And I would definitely have the music a lot lower with, when I'm with somebody, just to be able to talk to them and hear if they're in distress or anything like that.
Thank you.
Is there anything else? I'm, I'm on board, too. Just, just keep the garage door closed, and, and I kind of almost reckon this to like a, somebody getting piano lessons. You know, as long as it's in the home, and, and you're not flipping over car tires in the backyard and whatnot, then, and, and no more than two. And now, a quick question I had is, are you trying to possibly build a clientele up to move into a larger facility, or is this, is this the end game here?
I haven't thought that far out. I mean, I, I think it would be nice to have a place down the road, if it's feasible, but since I'm just planning to have myself employed, no one else, I don't really see that right now. Plus, I do want to keep the whole, like, private aspect, so that would have to be a lot of savings in the future if I wanted a, a space, you know, to buy a place that's private.
Okay. Thank you, thank you for your time.
Yes, thank you very much.
With that, I'll entertain a motion.
I will make a motion to approve with the nine proposed conditions.
Second. Joe, please call the roll.
Mr. Haddon.
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Cicero.
Yes.
Mr. Crocker.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And good luck.
Thank you very much.
Under old business, this will remain on the table one more time due to the HOA's meeting was after the filing deadline, so this is the final time. And hopefully, they will be here next time, right?
That was the message that was given to them.
That's great.
Yep.
Okay. Architectural review of a commercial building at 8715 Mentor Avenue. Is that applicant here? Please come up, state your name and address, and tell us a little bit about what you want to do. Oh, I looked at the wrong way.
Hi, my name is Pete Hatcher. I'm with Expedite the Deal. 6587 Hillier Drive, Canal Winchester, 43110. This is for Science for, oops, excuse me, Science for Citizen Bank. We are proposing to reimage the existing bank located at 8715 Mentor Avenue. Main two-story building is constructed using white paint and horizontal siding with black shutters on each window. Existing building addition is constructed primarily of brick. It has been painted white to match the main building. I am requesting modifications to this two-story building to eliminate the pitch portion of the front main entrance portico to allow for the placement of a business sign centered on the building. In addition, we'd like to place green-sloped awnings over the first-floor windows on the front side and rear of the building. Each awning is shown to have a light bar running horizontally at the top of the awning. The light will cast over the top of the awning. Specification of the awnings and light fissures have been provided. And for a wall sign on the front, above the front portico of the building, and a wall sign on the side of the building. On the left side. The lighting will comply with dark sky ordinance. It'll shine up. Whatever restrictions you have, we'll follow for those.
Okay, thank you. Kathy, anything from the administration?
I just, we have the, we have the four conditions, and I would just remind the applicant that the signage is a separate approval process, which should be through the Planning Department.
Thank you. Anything from fellow commission members? With that, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion with the four conditions.
Second.
Joe, please call the roll.
Mr. Haddon.
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Cicero.
Yes.
Mr. Crocker.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes. Thank you. We have a minor subdivision to create two lots at 9033 Lake Overlook Drive. Is that applicant here? Please state your name and address, and tell us a little bit about what you want to do.
Good evening. My name is Tony Avani. I'm an attorney. My office is in Painesville, but I happen to live in Mentor, at Waterford Village. And my client originally purchased three 50-foot lots on Lake Overlook, three adjacent lots. Several years back, he combined two of them into a single parcel, so he ended up with a 100-foot lot and a 50-foot lot. Built a home on the 100-foot wide lot, combined lot, and several years have passed. Now he's considering building another home on the other parcel, which is only 50 feet wide. As it turns out, the way the home was constructed, it was built towards the one end of the 100-foot lot, and it appears there's, he was, he's asking for a lot line adjustment. He would like to take 25 feet off the 100-foot parcel, add it to the 50-foot parcel, so that he would end up with two 75-foot lots. And he believes he could build a better, larger home on a 75-foot lot than he could on a 50-foot lot, so he's simply requesting a lot line adjustment, as, as indicated in the application.
Thank you. Kathy, anything from the administration?
I would ask the applicant maybe if they could elaborate on the intended plans of the, of the parcels. We noted in the, in the staff report in that last paragraph, recognizing that there's eight parcels there that are owned by the applicant. And while we understand that some of those parcels are bisected by the vacated Headlands Road right-of-way, was there any desire for the applicant to possibly consolidate some more of the land in the future, just to make them more conforming?
I think the answer to that is yes. I spoke with my client today, he's in Florida, by the way, he not, not, he goes, winters in Florida, but he's very much aware of that situation, and he hasn't, he hasn't decided on how or what is to be combined, but very definitely combination of additional parcels is part of his plan, and of course, he would have to come back to the city for whatever those, those combinations would be.
Thank you. Anything from the commission members?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Varga.
Along the lines of that last question from the city, there's really no access to any of these properties in the back, so. And that 50-foot right-of-way, a 50-foot lot, and I'm not saying, I think he's doing fine, I don't have a problem with what he's doing, but he may have just closed off the last chance to be able to get an easement to the back if he wanted to do something else. So the only thing I'm bringing up is, sure, I don't have any problem with this, but he may be limiting what he can do in the back relative to any other kind of development.
And again, he's very much aware of that, and he certainly is not going to do anything that is not going to be beneficial, but I think he has that very much in mind. He just hasn't concluded what he would like to do yet. He's still trying to reach that determination.
The only reason I bring it up is because you would have to come in front of us again, and we wouldn't want to have to deal with a problem that we may have caused...
Understood.
...by making this agreement and then saying, being told, "Well, we have no access. Now what, what are we going to do?" Well, that's part of your decision-making process, so. So I'm going to come, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anything else? With that, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve, no conditions listed.
Second.
Joe, please call the roll.
Mr. Haddon.
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Cicero.
Yes.
Mr. Crocker.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we've got a final site plan of a restaurant, Starbucks, at 8323 Tyler Boulevard. Tell us a little bit about you want, what you want to do about the site plan.
Okay, good evening. My name's David Budge. I'm here with WXE Development. Address is 22720 Fairview Center Park Drive, number 150, and that's Fairview Park, Ohio. We're back before you with our final site plan submission, and then the next item, which is architectural review. I'll deal with the site plan and answer any questions I can on the architecture. I've also got Chris Buckelman here with Bowen, who's our architect, and he'll walk through some of the architecture. We've got some samples as well, so I don't know if there's an easel or something we could set that up, or we can just lean it against, if this is important.
Possibly.
Yeah. Heavy part of it. Uh-huh, okay. I'm not an engineer, but. The, so we came here in Au, we started the process in August and submitted an initial site plan, which showed the building facing Giant Eagle. Came back and revised that plan and flipped the building so that it was oriented towards Tyler Boulevard, and received a preliminary site plan approval for that in September. And what's before you is the final submission, which is a full submission of the site plan, the utility plan, grading plan, landscape plan for your consideration. So there's a lot of detail in the plan. I've read the staff report, understand, I think, what issues are out there. The one item that came up after we got the staff report was regarding the dumpster location. We realized after we submitted on the 30th that the wrong landscape plan was in the submission, and so it showed a different location or a different orientation to the dumpster than what we were proposing or hoping to get approved. And that was related to a number of site plan iterations that we did with Starbucks, trying to figure out how to best work out the service for the building. Some preliminary conversations we had with the city staff was, you know, they'd like to see something similar to what is next door, a Taco Bell. And so we were trying to mimic that. Some earlier versions of that plan, we had the dumpster facing inward towards the site, and that was the one, one of the ones that made it into the, the submission to the city. So the, the problem with that is, we can't, we really don't want to have the garbage truck circle in the building and blocking the drive-through to service the dumpster corral. We'd rather have the corral facing out towards the, the main drive aisle, similar to the Taco Bell next door. It would just keep the, our, our service, the garbage truck off of the site, which is just kind of tight, and that was a plan that was rejected by Starbucks, and it was somehow, again, found its way into our submission. So I submitted a revised landscape plan to city staff, I think yesterday, maybe, or, and I just said, "I'd like to have that introduced and considered," just because it's consistent with the rest of the civil package that we put in, and I think it actually works better for the site. So that, that's the one item that has changed based on, I think, what you saw, what you've seen previously. Other than that, you know, we've, I think, followed the city's guidelines, and based on the staff report, I don't see a lot of, you know, big issues outstanding on the site plan.
Thank you. Kathy, anything from the administration?
I have two questions. Well, I guess one comment with regard to the reorientation of the access or servicing of the, of the dumpsters, as long as the commission's comfortable with it. And I guess we have not heard any, any feedback from the property owner, Visconti, that they have a problem with it. I'm assuming they've, they've seen it?
They have, yeah.
And so it is consistent with the Taco Bell location, I think, while we're not crazy about where it is in, in relation to the stop sign, I think, but the fact that it's only going to be serviced maybe once a day won't cause, wouldn't cause a problem. The other one I wanted, the other condition I wanted to just point out and ask the applicant was our recommendation to angle the parking spaces that are immediately adjacent to the building to be consistent with the other parking spaces on there. This way to, to make clear the, the direction of flow on the site.
Yeah, that, that's fine, it makes sense. So we have no, no issue with that.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Tiedemann.
I have a question, just based on what Kathy just said, do we need then to change condition number seven?
Is that all, Kathy?
Maybe just acknowledge, either, if, if seven's going to be eliminated, maybe just acknowledge that the landscape plan as submitted and, and reviewed at tonight's meeting would be the accepted landscape plan. Maybe that's the condition that is, is presented, just so there's no confusion with the landscape plan moving forward. Is there a date on that landscape? Yeah. If we could refer to the date specifically, so there's no...
Replace number seven with that.
So it is dated 10/19. So the updated landscape plan dated 10/19 shall be the approved landscape plan moving forward.
Okay.
If that works for you.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Varga.
Just one question and one comment. Is there any ground-mounted equipment that we don't see on the plan, like a transformer or anything like that? Because I don't see it on the plan, so.
Yeah, I, I believe there is a, a step-down transformer in the back, behind...
It's behind that, that fence or grate that you have in the back?
The board-on-board fence, correct.
Right, so it's, it's not visible from...
Well, no, by the looks of it, on this plan anyway, there would be a transformer. It would be just inside the curb on, next to that last, uh, next to the last parking spot, behind, behind the building, you know, it'd be in that general area. Yes.
Okay, so, I mean, I, I'm not seeing that, so.
Sure. I, I mean, I could point it out if we go to the utility plan. It just says proposed, but...
Well, here's, the, the reason I bring it up is that I don't want to see it. So it should be incorporated into the landscaping plan so that it's, it's visually not visible from either the, the facility drive or as you drive in and out, that you enclose it with some kind of landscaping.
Okay.
Which is not part of the plan now, which is why I'm bringing it up. Go ahead, Kathy.
Mr. Chairman and commission, I would just maybe, and this is in this, in the architectural conditions, but we didn't, we normally say all mechanical units, we just said roof-mounted, so maybe we would just add ground-mounted and roof-mounted.
Well, and, and when I'm, they're suggesting where it's located, I don't actually see the device on the, on the ground, but I would want to see that then incorporated into a landscaping plan, so you don't see it. So it's not just a piece of equipment sitting in the, in the middle of the yard there.
You want to add that condition to the site plan?
Yes, well, I, I was waiting for any of the comments, so...
Yeah, it's fine, it's not a big deal.
So my, my additional comment would be to visually enclose ground-mounted, it's a transformer?
Yes.
Transformer, with landscaping. And my, my other, well, it's a question, it's just a statement. The, the trash enclosure, I mean, we, we've made the point, self-closing doors, we really want to see self-closing doors, okay? We don't want to see the doors hanging half-open, or...
Right.
I mean, if it requires a little higher-grade door, or a spring, or, you know, mechanism, especially now since it's facing out of the, you know, outward, we really want to see those doors closed. So it's not an additional condition, it's just a statement made that any approval would be based on those doors being always closed.
Right. Yeah, that, that's typical, I mean, for now.
I, I know, I'm just verbalizing it relative to this plan.
Thank you. Is there anything else? With that, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, can we recap the two conditions, just to make sure my notes are correct?
Yeah, I was hoping to get that right here.
Okay. Here's what I have for it. Condition number seven, the, all of the language would be substituted for revised landscape plan dated 10/19/21 shall be the approved plan. And then I believe Mr. Varga has an additional condition, number 10, quote, visually enclosed ground-mounted transformer units with landscaping.
Maybe we could, I don't know if we need to add, approved by the city? Kathy, do we need, do we need to add, add that?
I mean, well, yeah.
You're going to approve it anyhow, but I mean, approved by the city, just so that it's clear someone reviewed this.
What, you said, administration?
Administration.
Okay. So the, that condition would read visually enclosed ground-mounted transformer with landscaping as approved by the administration.
Correct, very good.
Thank you. With that, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve with the 10 conditions.
Second.
Mr. Haddon.
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Cicero.
Yes.
Mr. Crocker.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Okay, we have an architectural review of a restaurant, Starbucks, at 8323 Tyler Boulevard. Will you talk a little bit about the architecture?
Sure. So the elevations that we've put in front of you are consistent with what we've presented before, although there have been some changes. The, initially, the, the elevations that we presented, there was a request for four-sided architecture, so more variety of materials on the back of the building, and also working to screen some of the mechanical units, and just make it more consistent with, with the buildings that are already out there. And so we've tried to do that and have, have changed a few things on the elevations, and so I can let Chris talk a little bit more about that, and we can talk a little bit about the materials that are proposed as well.
Thank you. Joe, do you have Chris's name and address?
It's Mr. Buckelman, correct?
Um, it's Mr. Buckman, correct?
Yes.
Okay, we're all set.
Okay, so, uh, as you can see, in the, uh, elevation shown here, um, the addition of the, uh, screening area to the back, the, uh, fence area to help, I guess, uh, better, better hide, um, where the, uh, main mechanical connections come into the building, and so on and so forth. Uh, in terms of the, uh, roof, uh, equipment, uh, we have actually decided to employ, uh, well, at least we're specifying currently, a roof screen system. Uh, it's a seven-point-two rib panel. We actually have a copy of it right here on hand, if you guys would like to see this as well. It's just a very simplistic system. Uh, it's a, uh, metal corrugated, uh, horizontally corrugated vertical panels, which would hide the, any and all of- And, uh, for, uh, well, I guess for any company, we also have several different variations as well, which would be available to us if, uh, this would not be preferred.
Let me jump in real quick. Chris is pinch-hitting for the project architect who had a family emergency, so he just got up to speed on the project today. But a couple of other just small notes. We introduced the, uh, wood column in the back, um, which, again, just tried to give some variety to the, uh, elevation exactly, and, you know, the earlier versions of this, uh, of this building had just the brick veneer around the back. We've returned that wood cladding, uh, around, uh, around the back, and, uh, and, and did the brick veneer as well. And so, we also raised the parapet on the drive-through side to, to, to create a little bit of articulation in, in the facade, um, and, you know, just trying to create some variety. So, this is consistent in terms of, you know, what Visconti's, Visconti's seen this, they've approved it, it's in line with their design requirements, uh, and we've tried to hopefully incorporate, you know, some of the comments that we got back from, um, from the city early on. In terms of the materials, Chris is a lot better versed at that, in terms of the actual, you know, materials that are out there. So if, if you have questions about that, or, and we've got the samples here of the actual colors, because the copies don't always, you know, very, uh, real crisp. So, um, we'd be happy to answer questions, so.
Thank you. Kathy, anything from the administration?
Just to confirm those, the sample board is, uh, is showing the same materials that we've listed under the architectural conditions? So the brick veneer, the wood siding, and the ephes driv-, drive it, the dovetail, the barista's frothier?
Correct. I believe, uh, looking at it from the back here, the color is actually up here for the ephes.
Yeah, okay.
Yep.
We don't necessarily then need to keep that. I guess I just wanted to make sure that it matched what we've listed in the conditions.
Thank you. Anything from the commission members? With that, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve with the two conditions.
Second.
Joe, please call the roll.
Mr. Haddon.
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Cicero.
Yes.
Mr. Crocker.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
One more, uh, item of business here. I'll entertain a motion to approve the municipal planning commission dates for two thousand twenty-two.
So moved.
Second.
Joe?
Mr. Haddon.
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Cicero.
Yes.
Mr. Crocker.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.